Okay, good. All right, we both numbered it wrong. You have 55 pages? I have 52.
Oh, did somebody number the blank page?
I did not. There's one blank page.
A blank page that we did not.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order. We'll call. All the commissioners are present, save for Jan Rutke. We'll begin. I would just like to make a comment that we make a living by what we get. We make a life by what we give, and that was from the immortal words of Winston Churchill. And I think it's a good call for us as a volunteer organization, and I just wanted to share that with you. So if we can begin with the approval of the September 27 Planning and Zoning Commission Agenda. For the approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Discussion?
Oh, discussion?
There are a couple of things in the agenda that Mr. Jakubiak was supposed to get back to us on. Will those be tonight, or do we have any estimate on when those will happen?
I believe they're back to you. Didn't we, wasn't it in the packet, the draft?
No, it says, let's see, questions regarding Comar pertaining to land use, and Mr. Jakubiak will research and advise the commission.
Regarding
Sarah, can you have any comment?
Is this regarding the critical area regulations?
Yes.
Right.
Well, it's the difference between, as in the agenda, it says the difference between the land use policies of Comar 27.1, 2.03 pertaining to land use activities within the IDA, and land use policies in Comar 27.01, 02, 04 pertaining to land use activities within the LDA.
I'm thinking this is just how the draft is set up. I just want to make sure I understand. This is in reference to what land use activities are allowed in this draft of the critical area?
I think Mr. Jakubiak with Commissioner Brown is saying he was supposed to provide us information for clarification and before he left, but we didn't get that information from him.
Okay, so I did not have a request to provide that information, but we can look into this. You're talking about Comar with regard to critical area regulations with regard to the draft that they, the draft document. Like, this draft is based on their 2022 draft critical area regulations, so everything is up to date from Comar.
Anyway, the question was in the agenda, or in the minute, so if you could get back to us on what the difference is between those two Comar sections as it addresses LDA and IDA?
Okay. Larry, Commissioner Brown, can you give the citation in the minutes where that?
Yeah, it's on the bottom of the first page.
Bottom of the first page?
Oh, wait, 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 I have it turned over.
Bottom of the next to the last.
Bottom of the second page. But it says note.
It's the fourth page.
Mr., oh, yes, it's on the second page under, it's Section 8 New Business, and it under, at the very last line, it says note, Mr. Jakubiak will research and advise the commission. Do you see that, Sarah?
I do not have the minutes in front of me. I do not.
Okay.
And the other one was on
Get my Commissioner Brown, please. Let Sarah, I want to make sure that she is on the same page with us, please. It's the minutes, and it should say Minutes of the Planning Commission Meeting, July 26, 2023. So it's on the second page, Sharon, at the very bottom.
And the other one is on
Yeah, so there's one on page two, and then I believe there's also one
Page four, the last
On page, well, the last page of the document where it says, oh, no.
Right, one is in regard to two different sections of Comar, and then the other is in regard to the Inloa.
Yeah.
So I know that he put all of that information, like that he did the research and adjusted the draft based on the research, but he did not tell me to provide that information, so I apologize for not having it, but I can, if a memo would be adequate, Chair, I can prepare you.
You could just verbally comment on it in the next meeting. You could just, you know, provide that. It doesn't have to be written. It could be verbal, what you found.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And on the last page, page four, it says, Mission requests Mr. Jakubiak to also provide a definition of a tree and standards on when you can and cannot down a tree. And the, where we, he has proposed a two-page discussion on trees in the critical area, and there's no definition of a tree. And frankly, I would propose that we send all questions about this tree coverage and et cetera to the Green Committee and get them to make recommendations so that it's integrated into the section on urban forest that was passed by the commission a couple of meetings ago.
I agree, Commissioner Brown, because there's also the Green Team, as well as now there has been established a tree committee as well. So that definition is applicable for all, for both of those other bodies, so I think that they should all be in concert with one another.
Yeah, and the urban forest ordinance that was passed, several different definitions of a tree depending upon how close it is to the sidewalk or something.
I think we did discuss, though, those trees are very large in that urban forest.
Well, but we need to at least hear from the Green Committee on what all want us to consider for trees in the critical area, because that's what we're discussing. Oval and replacement, et cetera.
Right, but there's forest conservation easements, there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of regulations that that tree ordinance is not going to cover.
Can we just hold for one minute? I want to make sure. Sarah, are you, did you see that reference in the minutes?
Right, regarding the tree ordinance.
Yes.
Not the
The tree ordinance in number three on the last page, that bottom, the last sentence the commission requested. I just wanted to make sure you're with us.
Yes, and this is sort of referring to the tree ordinance rather than the critical area ordinance.
Right, but we also had asked for Mr. Jakubiak to provide a definition of the tree, so we can, you know, we can all be on the same page and we're using the same reference.
Correct.
Okay.
So the question that came up was the tree ordinance has the definition of a tree worthier preservation, starting at 50 inches
Right.
in some areas, and then 75 inches in other areas. And we had had a discussion that that's not adequate for a forest conservation easement or a stand of forest, for example, that that might be adequate for somebody's tree on their personal lot. But we wouldn't want somebody taking large stands of forest and being able to chop down every tree 50 inches, less than 50 inches, because that's a very big tree.
Right. I guess I see what you're saying, but I think because they're really a forest. But I think what you're saying is you would like, there's not really a definition section in the critical area ordinance, but you'd like a definition of tree specifically for the critical area ordinance.
Sure, that's, so their ordinance is the urban forest, meaning, you know, kind of developed lots.
Yes.
But we have other types of lots that we wouldn't want that to interfere with. And maybe if we added stands of forest, or, you know, some information about the buffer, like, right now, they can't cut down trees that are helpful to the buffer.
Correct.
So, but that tree ordinance could potentially reverse that if we use only that definition. So that was the do-out to Chris, was to figure out a way to not have that happen.
Okay. So I just want to be clear that I understand the direction as to what, where this definition is in relation to, and whether it's in relation to putting in the critical area ordinance, or if it's in relation to, I should be looking at the tree ordinance for modifications.
Well, I don't think, I think the tree ordinance passed, so we would need greater protections in our critical area ordinance than the tree ordinance provides.
I think it does provide them, but if you want to, like, be assured that you, because a stand of forest isn't going to only be applicable with your tree ordinance, but if you want to provide a definition for that in the critical area ordinance, we can do that.
I think at a high level, we have some areas, for example, on Cox Road, that could be clear-cut if we apply the regulation of that tree ordinance to that area, and I don't think that maybe that was the intent. It was really just to provide homeowners some guidance as to what they need to preserve.
Okay.
And then when I compared that tree ordinance to other towns, it was very much less restrictive than, say, Annapolis. I'd be interested what Upper Marlboro has, or what Bowie has, or what other places have.
Madam Chair, it seems to me we've got a couple of things going on here. Our discussion is about the critical area. That's what's on the agenda.
Correct.
What I think you're talking about is Cox Road, which is not in the critical area.
Isn't in the critical area.
It's a thousand feet.
On the overlay.
Okay, so, but you're talking in general about the whole
Well, in general, we also have the area around Fish and Creek. We have
Yeah, so
Randall Cliffs.
But still recommend that we send it to the Green Committee and let them look at the issues involved, because they're the ones that are going, you know, forcing this with the tree committee.
Absolutely. I definitely think, and my mind was to have also the Green Team speak to us about this as a, you know, giving us some guidance, because they're also going to be soon in compliance with Maryland's planting 5 million trees in five million, in five years. They are going to be initiating that, so we want to make sure that at minimum, we all have the definition of trees, and to understand that we're all on the same page.
If you could then also, Madam Chair, make sure that we understand where the tree ordinance applies and where critical area forest conservation regulations would override the tree ordinance and where it would not.
And what's the second part of that?
Forest conservation regulation. Where they would supersede the tree ordinance. Where they would not.
Is there any further discussion on that matter? In approval of the commission, the Planning Commission Agenda? Is there any further discussion on that matter or any other matter before the approval of the agenda? Okay, so do we have a second for the approval of the?
That's me.
You second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No? Thank you. So the agenda has been approved. Now, the next point of order, I would like to, we kind of jumped the gun a little bit here with you, Sarah, but I wanted to welcome Sarah Franklin. She is our new Planning and Zoning Administrator, and just to give you a little background about Sarah. She has a master's degree in community planning from the University of Maryland School of Architecture, Planning and Preservation. She has worked as a planner with Mr. Jakubiak and associates in towns throughout the state of Maryland, including Chesapeake Beach Rail Trail Project. Her background includes a comprehensive planning, Main Street management, data analysis, zoning, and codification review, and accounting. Sarah has worked in local government as an elected official for the town of Upper Marlboro, and has gained experience in municipal budgeting, operations, and drafting legislation. Sarah is known for solution-focused thinking. Yay! Sarah enjoys hiking, gardening, and has been known to sew her own clothing. Wow, I applaud that. We'd like to welcome you, and thank you for joining us tonight. Despite, I'm happy that you're through COVID and you were able to join us in presence, and we welcome and look forward to working with you, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the July 26, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting.
I move to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
It's approved? And now, item number five, public comment on, is there any public comment on any item in the agenda? Seeing no one, hearing no one. We have no documentation as well as correspondence, Sharon, as well?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right. Then we will now move on to old business, which is the critical area regulations. First, if everybody has not done so, just, we, in the future, when we have a document, I think it really would benefit us if we added page numbers to it. It would just simplify our lives. So if you haven't done so already, please number the pages of the draft, and right, and as the Vice Chair has noted, that I believe it's after page, page 36. I have it as 34. Page 34 is blank on the front, but on the back, it's Yeah. So, yeah. Part seven's growth allocation is on the back of what I show is page 35. But just to avoid the confusion, we should, in the future, number our documents. Otherwise, we're going to be spending, you know, time making sure everybody is on the same page. So.
Might have different versions, that's it.
Now, do you, does your version say, Commissioner Hawn, September 18, 2023 on the front? Okay. Does everybody's version say that? September 18, 2023. Okay, so, maybe we should review how we count. Ah, the count, one. So.
Are you just your blank one, Kelly?
Thirty-seven. Yeah.
Thirty-seven is my blank one as well.
The next one is 37.
Mine shows 34.
We numbered it 30.
Yeah, yeah, you numbered it.
Okay, okay.
I will make sure there are page numbers in the future. But my technology did not want to play nice with Chris's technology, and I spent over an hour trying to eliminate the blank pages, but I will have them eliminated by the end.
No worries. Thank you. Okay. So, critical area regulations. If we want to pick up where we left off. Now, everybody got this document of the draft, and as you can see, text to be removed has been highlighted in yellow. The text to be added is in red. So I, has everybody had an opportunity to look through this document? Is that yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we should pick up where we left off. Does somebody want specifically to start?
I have one question, Madam Chair. Did we vote in favor of removing as specified in Comar? Because I don't think that we did.
Is it yellowed?
It's crossed out and yellowed, yes.
Some of the yellow was done by Chris.
Right.
Without us approving.
Right, so I think that we actually specifically unapproved that.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so that needs to stay.
And do you have a particular page you're citing?
Page three.
Your page three, my page, and we're on page three.
Page three E.
I'm sorry, E1?
Page three E1.
Oh, oh, so the second sentence where it says as specified in Comar 27.03.01.04?
Yes.
And you want that placed back in?
Yes, and I think that we decided that we would place it back in.
Okay.
Do we need to motion that again?
Yeah.
That was motioned the last time I did that. I thought, somebody did that.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll make a motion to place as specified in Comar 27.03.01.04. Place that in the text and retain it. In a second, if we're going to do it again.
Is it, do we have a second? Any discussion?
My question is, do we have that again in other pages? We both make it blanket.
Oh, that's a good idea.
If there is a specification in Comar, we should just leave it. I don't remember that there is, but there might be. There is one, there is one on page 15, actually. You go to page 15 on number three, there's one there as well. So let's, can you do your motion, please? All the, all of the removals
Citation.
specified in Comar blank, please retain and remove.
So we're keeping all references
I'm going to do it in two motions, so we'll keep this one here, and then I'll make a blanket one after that, because all of the Comar references aren't going to say .04.
No, you can leave off the number. You can just
But, Commissioner Blackwelder, in your motion, you're going to specify that all reference to Comar will remain through the document?
Yes.
Well, not
We got the one for this one.
Right.
And then she's going to make the second motion.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, so yes, let's just aye this one, and then I'll make the second one.
Okay.
Or if you're going to aye, vote how you choose. So my motion is to retain the language as specified in Comar 27.03.01.04 or in Section E1.
Discussion? There is no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes?
No.
No? Oh, one, one no.
One no.
One no.
And I'll make the motion that Cindy suggested. Going forward throughout the document, I would like to make the motion that going through, forward throughout the document, when a Comar reference is specified, that we retain it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
My general objection to that is that there's a lot of information in these Comars that is not here, that should be, it should be readable to the common citizen. They should be able to see the important things in our document and not have to go to some subsequent document. For example, in the one we just approved, "Buffer Management Plans: A Local Approving Authority Shall Submit a Copy of the Proposed Major Buffer Management Plan" and the approved "Major Buffer Management Plan for Those Categories of Applications of This Regulation" and for critical area variances. What is a major buffer management plan?
So it's going to depend on the size, and it's probably defined in Comar, is why it's referring back to it, right?
It's a, you're saying it's a Comar definition?
Yeah, it's going to be defined by Comar, and so the benefit of referring to Comar
Well, let me rephrase it. Does the town have to put together a major buffer management plan?
For what develop, like, for our development? For the town's development?
Why, there are buffer management plans mentioned in other Comars, but this one is the major buffer management plan. What's the difference between that and a buffer management plan?
Right. I, I mean, I would have to check the Comar reference, but I believe what you're referring to, and I'm not sure which page you're on. I think you're in the buffer management plan and planning standards.
On the Comar page, which
Oh, you're on
Blackwelder's handed up.
Oh.
It's the, it's the E on the second page.
Okay.
But it's more than just that. The question is, I mean,
Right.
We don't know what a major buffer management plan is, but we're incorporating it into our document, and we can't explain it. So how many, how many buffer management plans are there in existence in Chesapeake Beach now?
I do not know the answer to that. This is for buffer
But the, a buffer management plan is, according to 27.01.09.01-4 and 2, has follow-on actions that are required at the five-year point, and it's supposed to be inspected. Who does, who manages these buffer management plans in the town?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, and, I mean, we're imposing new requirements. We've got the port wardens, a whole section in our code about port wardens, which has never been implemented. Nobody's been assigned to be a port warden. It's a dormant and unnecessary, since we aren't doing it, in our code. I just have a problem with putting things into the code that make it more complicated for the citizen to understand and to read and to implement. And if we're going to And if we're going to impose buffer management plans, we need to know who's going to manage them from the town level. And, and then who's going to follow up on the, the actions that we are telling them they have to do? Or else, why are we doing that? That's, that's my point. So I, I basically object to putting a generic COMAR references throughout here because it, it just imposes more complexity on.
I think if we don't reference COMAR, we won't be following it. So, do we intend to follow COMAR or not? And historically, our code has been skeletal. And we don't require enough regulation on development often. We pay for it. But.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, please, I'd like to go around.
Yeah, yeah, so I understand Commissioner Brown's issue on too much confusion for the reader, and you want to simplify things. But I think to Commissioner Blackwelder's point, if we make a reference, then people will understand that it's not just being pulled out of a subjective idea, that it actually is coming from some, uh, you know, codification out in, you know, in Annapolis somewhere, and that we actually have reference for it. Now, that is not to say, though, that we can't require stricter guidelines in this town. Another one of the codes that I did read in COMAR was that, yes, we can actually go more strict, more restrictive than COMAR is. But in these situations, I think it helps to know that, hey, what does COMAR really say about that? And I know that at times I will go in there and take a look at COMAR, and I'll read the entire thing and just then make reference. I then go to St. Michael's, and they have the exact same wording. So it's kind of interesting to see how the different towns will just generally use something from COMAR and that we all kind of, you know, use that as a blanket, uh, you know, code. So I kind of like it in there, that it kind of makes us all understand each other and know where we're all coming from, so.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Weaver Larson, uh, Larson Weaver, pardon me.
I am sort of confused about something procedurally, because I'm new. Didn't we vote on this last meeting?
In.
The one that was just approved was voted on.
Yes. Okay, I thought we had kind of had this discussion in a, so I, and just making sure that I'm like following what's happening here. Okay.
We're discussing again and reaffirming.
Okay.
Or if, if we choose to.
Yeah. Well, and also, I guess, in some part, because we had voted on it, and then if somebody's missing, and then we're revoting on it, it just.
Last meeting, we voted on this specific reference.
Not the entire document.
But not a generic throughout the document. And that's what's being proposed.
Okay.
And that's what I, and we'll vote.
Okay.
So, Commissioner Larson, do you have a comment?
No comment.
All right. Commissioner Hahn?
I vote to leave it in. It's a source for us to cite the reference and to refer to it. And as someone that works in regulations, I want to be able to go back to the source to know where they're, where they're getting their information from.
Okay. My opinion, I, I agree with Commissioner Blackwelder. I think it's important. I agree. I mean, to, yes, to make the document as readable and understandable as possible is extremely helpful, and it's valuable for the average person reading this. You know, I understand about, we don't want to make it complicated or convoluted or hard to underst, more difficult to understand what we're talking about. But I, there are individuals who are going to read this and say, did that just come out of the sky? What's the reference for it? And they might want to read more, just so they know and understand exactly what the regulation pertains to. So, having said that, there's no further discussion. I'd like to make a vote and. Now, so all in favor of keeping the COMAR regulations, the motion as presented by Commissioner Blackwelder?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Madam Chair, who seconded that?
I'm sorry?
Who seconded that second motion? Did you?
I did.
Okay. All right.
So, all in favor of Commissioner Blackwelder's motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Mash, the motion passes?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Could I indulge the commission? Especially for all of the new members in the, in the audience and here on the dais. Can we go more or less page by page, just to see what Mr. Jacobyak might have changed? And also, there are some typos and things that we might want to clear up, since we need to have a final copy here at some point. Would you mind entertaining that? Or did you want to go right down to the endpoint of where we left off? How do you, how did you want to approach this? Because I have a few things.
By chair, it's fine with me if we go back through page by page. So we make sure that we're all on the same page as every, that their erroneous removal of language has not happened. And so we, we all know what's actually been done. And if it did get completed. I just, one, one point. Sarah, you've reviewed this document, is that correct?
Right, so I've reviewed it, I've edited it, I've made changes where I thought were appropriate. Nothing really substantive, but more of the grammatical. And like replacing municipality with pound of Chesapeake Beach. But I do not know what changes Chris made between your last meeting and him handing the document over to me. If that makes sense.
From our last meeting until he handed, so when you received the document, you don't know if Chris made the changes that we had discussed at the last month's meeting?
That is correct.
Okay, so this, the version that has been provided is what?
My codifications.
Edit of what Chris gave you.
What Chris gave you.
Then, in that case, I absolutely think we should probably go back through page by page to make sure everybody's recollection and what's been included and eliminated, we're, we're all in concert with what we had voted on. So. Vice Chair, do you want to begin?
Well, unless we want to go, I don't know, you want to just start at page, we've done page, want to go page one? Start at page one, then I guess we'll start at page one, how about that?
Seems like a good beginning.
Yeah, on page one, B, the critical area program. It says the town adopted its critical area program on and has insert date. The date is December first nineteen eighty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you. December first nineteen eighty-five? All right, are we moving on to page two?
Yeah.
So everybody on page two shows item number three under C, responsibilities highlighted in red. That's all been added. So, is it necessary, should we read that? So we.
I think we've all read it.
Yeah, I think that this is what we voted.
Unless we want to make note of it somehow, or we want to comment on it.
All right. Then we move on to page three. Under E, three E. Notification of project approval has been, is highlighted and has been struck. And replacing it, applications referred to the Critical Area Commission. Then. Yes?
Suggests that we change it to the real name of the commission, which is the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission.
The official name.
Is that the official name of?
Chesapeake Bay or Chesapeake Beach?
Chesapeake Bay.
No.
And see, that's the confusion. If you, if you just leave it Critical Area Commission, who, is it the town commission? Is it the county's commission? This is the, the state's Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission. If you'd like the website, I can give you that too.
Then we should also be changing E one, where it says Critical Area Commission in the, in the next paragraph. You should refer to it down there as well, do you think? Or once.
Well, once it's been.
Once you've already referred.
You could always use the acronym of it. You know, C, B, C, A, C.
Is that the state Critical Area Commission?
So, we could put the acronym in parentheses and then use the acronym.
Yes, why don't we do that, make it easy?
But that is the correct name, the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission?
Right.
Of the state's Critical Area Commission.
I mean, it might, it might actually technically be called like the state of Maryland. So I'll check it and make sure it's the accurate one before I put it in there. But, yes, it's Chesapeake, Chesapeake Bay.
Because in this town, somebody will point out.
That it's called the state of Maryland.
Something else, and they will bring it to the Board of Appeals and appeal it. So we need to be accurate.
I, I will double check to make absolutely certain. That's a legal name.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
So every, every citation for that will then have the acronym, since we've identified it by its proper name, and you verified that.
And you want to use the acronym rather than the abbreviation of calling it?
Yeah, I think that.
We just want it to be legal.
Right.
All right. Then on E one A, a single-family dwelling unit or in red or addition thereto. Under item number two, the addition of copy of the has been added. Under number three, Chesapeake Beach may not possess an application. Chesapeake Beach has been added. And number four, the town of has been added.
We want the town of with number three, because we just have Chesapeake. So, we want to be consistent on our name-calling. So in other words, we have the town of down below, and then we have Chesapeake Beach on it.
Well, I, I think we should maybe do the exact same thing that we've just done with the official name of Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission. We should have the town of Chesapeake Beach, and then we should put the acronym behind it. And then we should, any time that it's, we're referencing the town of Chesapeake Beach, it should show. And that should be throughout the document, to my mind.
So what's the acronym, TCB? I've never seen that as the acronym to town of Chesapeake Beach.
DOCB?
DOCB?
Do we call it that?
Or PCB?
Call it that on text.
You can, you can do, I mean, we, we can make reference to the of or not, but once you, you define what the acronym is.
Madam Chair? If, if we're going to start using acronyms after we have, in the front, could we have an acronym page?
Sure.
We definitely need to go over definitions. And after we're done with the critical area, definitions might be one of those agenda items that we hit.
You know, I'm not sure I like an acronym for the town of Chesapeake Beach. I, I'm kind of old-fashioned. What do you think, Commissioner Brown? You seem to have an opinion about that one.
It's a question.
The, oh, I caught you. I caught you. I'm, I think using an acronym for the Chesapeake Bay, you know, Critical Area Commission is okay, because we don't seem to use that as often. But we're going to be using the town of Chesapeake Beach a lot. And it seems like that acronym might be a little awkward throughout the entire. I don't know, I.
I hadn't recommended an acronym. I'd recommend using the words Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission. Wait for it. In acronyms, that's going to be.
Yeah, this could be complicated, huh?
I can do it either way.
Sarah, look up the correct terminology for the critical, like, let her go through it.
Well, and since you want to look it up, so on DNR dot Maryland dot gov slash critical area.
Thank you, Larry. Well. Well. Something else on this item that we voted on that is not included in here was Kelly's motion to retain the verbiage that says form downloaded from the commission's website. And I recall we did vote on retaining that. I don't know if it's in the minutes, because I forgot my minutes tonight. I'm sorry about that. But, um, we might want to re-vote on retaining that language as well.
Do we, do we need to redo it, since we already did it last time and you didn't incorporate it?
If it's not in the minutes, then it's not going to be documented, so.
Where is that?
No.
Is that?
Uh, so this is the document from last time. And Chris was going to divide up this, this section number one. That was the notion. And he did divide it up. But Kelly made a specific motion that we were going to retain the language about downloading the application.
Oh, oh, okay.
And when he did break this up in numbers, he did not include that language.
In number two.
About downloading the application?
Yeah, form downloaded from the commissioner's website, number two.
Number two.
He didn't, he didn't put it in red, but yeah.
I was, okay, great.
He fooled us.
He did fool us.
Oh, I didn't realize it was an addition, because it wasn't in red.
I personally would like to keep the town of Chesapeake Beach written out as the town of Chesapeake Beach. I'm the old-fashioned.
That is easy enough to do.
I'm sorry?
That's easy enough to do.
Yeah, I, I don't know, am I the only one that feels like we need to keep that at least formal? Yeah, we need to be then consistent on it.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Do we need a motion for that?
All right. You can make the motion, Vice Chair.
I would move that we keep the name Town of Chesapeake Beach in written-out format.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes? So, continuing on, we go to page four. There are no, no changes.
I have some for five, page five. Actually, it's just a couple type, well, actually, one typo. There's on number nine, there should be a comma after, if a road, bridge, or utility is authorized, comma, the design, construction, and maintenance shall. So there should be a comma after authorized. And actually, that was also in COMAR, so I looked that up. They, they had that comma. And then down on ten A, I would like to remove the word increases after reduce increases in flood frequency. I would just say reduce flood frequency. It seems kind of awkward to say reduce increases in flood frequency when you could just say reduce flood frequency. Is that trivial, or does anybody care? It just bothered me, but. I, I mean, okay, so that, the comma for Ms. Franklin, I don't need, that one's just a typo. But the ten A, I would like to make a motion to remove increases in, from ten A.
And we have a second? Commissioner Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? We want to make sure that on page five, number eight, it says new is highlighted as an addition, a new permanent sludge. Onward to page six. Number eleven. Disabled citizens has been removed and replaced with individuals with disabilities. B, approving authority has been added. On page seven, under C, approving authority has been added. And in that same paragraph, the town of Chesapeake Beach's apostrophe S has been. has been added. That's all for the, and then there's the removal of the text. And then that brings us to page eight. No change?
Can I just make one comment?
Please.
Um, the number 12, non-water dependent structures on piers. Uh, I'm a little.
Wait, let everybody.
Go back to page seven, go back to page seven, number 12 that was removed. Uh, it says non-water dependent structures on piers. I know we don't have piers, but if we do have a pier down the road, I remember when Mr. Kubik added piers as one of the, um, structures we could, we could possibly have. Sorry, page seven, but number 12. Oh, so non-water dependent structures on piers.
Uh huh.
If we have a pier, would we possibly want a non-water dependent structure on it? Is that a possibility? Are we excluding that option by having this here? Like, could we possibly want a little structure for a wedding? Or do we want to, you know, I'm just saying that's not water dependent. I'm just saying if we take, am I confusing the issue?
Oh, no.
I mean, I'm just talking out loud here because I'm thinking as, at first it seemed really reasonable. But now I'm thinking, now, wait a minute, do we really want to eliminate that? Or just?
I think our discussion was, and Chris was in favor of us amending if that were to come up for us. Like, kind of like Calvert County does, you know, you have these people, they want to build something specific and they're requesting an amendment prior to their site plan. What I'm worried about is if we include all this non-water dependent structures on piers, now we're opening a whole new can of worms that we have to regulate. Whereas if we just start by not allowing it, we will have the time to address it later.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. Okay, just talking out loud to you guys. Okay, fine.
All right, page, um, eight, there are no changes that I see. Page nine. Page 10. Here's the, yeah. Number seven has been added. No use shall be permitted in the IDA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district. Moving on.
Could I, could I go to number four, which was deleted?
Yes.
Um, I'm concerned about deleting number four. And I would like to see if anybody would agree with, um, a modification of that. It's about developing a strategy to reduce the impacts on water quality, et cetera, et cetera. But I almost wonder if we shouldn't, instead of taking it out entirely, just amending it to say the town shall develop a strategy to educate the public on, uh, let me see, how do I write this? I'm sorry. Hold on, I had it. Somebody, the point, the point of educating the public on tree removal and buffer mitigation programs or? No, that wasn't it. I have a whole thing of, I've written a whole thing. Excuse me, bear with me for one second. Okay, so how I changed it, if you want to or not, I don't care. The town shall develop an environment protection program which educates and informs all residents, businesses, and tourists on, um, activities and, uh, practices that can assist in the protection of our town's natural resources. Or something to the effect of, we need some kind of an education program to promote this entire critical area issue. I remember somebody talking last time about, well, nobody understands what tree, tree removal is all about. And nobody understands, you know, blah, blah, blah. And I'm thinking, well, maybe this is the one place in the entire document that we could put something about, promoting a strategy, as it says here in the very front, or developing a program that educates everybody in town, you know, businesses, everybody about, you know, what they can remove, a tree, you know, how they can remove it and not get fined. How you don't pollute the bay by not pouring, you know, um, you know, acid or something, I don't know, whatever. I'm just saying, we should have some kind of a education program in here that, that allows people to understand what critical area is all about and what they should and should not do. It's hard to find somebody about a, a tree, you know, falling down in their backyard and then they remove it. They don't know what they put, and not educate them on that. You know, it's really hard to, to do that. So I'm, I'm just thinking this is a good time to do it.
Well, in theory, that sounds like a great idea. That feels like it's beyond the scope of this to like figure out a plan to implement that. Like, wouldn't that take a lot of like resources to get figured out and involve quite a large process? Versus it being like to codify that and then we have to follow through with that? And that feels like.
That was my issue, town shall.
Town shall, yeah. Now, how are we following through with that without like a whole other thing being unleashed?
And do we have the budget?
Yeah.
Do we have the authority to put in there and do they have the budget to?
And if we don't, if we don't, then how is it to try and insist that somebody know the rules and regs on, on all the stuff that we're imposing on them with these, these buffers, these, you know, mitigation procedures? Well, so I mean, that's the question.
It could also not necessarily be, when you say program, it could be something simple as a, a flyer.
I mean.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
You know, like down at the beach, people climbing on the cliffs. If they understand that there, you know, there's a flyer about why that's not a great idea. I think, I think it's important and, and it gives people, oh, okay, I, I understand that. I don't, I don't think it has to be so.
Instead of program, just develop a, um, a, um.
Strategy or an educational.
Educational, um, strategy to alert the public on their responsibilities when it comes to the environment in the town of Chesapeake Beach. Something to indicate that they have responsibilities here.
What will play out practically is if we enforce these rules, then a lawyer will come and say, well, it says right here, the town shall do this, 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 and this, and where is it? And then you have, you know, committees or whoever, you know, making flyers, saying all different kinds of things. And now you have another circus.
Well, you have it on the website, you know, you have.
I get how it might be administered, but I think that keeping, codifying it in the code as a shall and making it part of how we can enforce the regulations is very unwise.
Well, it was obviously there before. I mean, I'm just, you know, re-inventing what was there. So obviously we've had that there. It's just that instead of striking it entirely.
We didn't have it there. That was in the, in the version that, uh, the people at DNR put together. This is, this is the, the straw man from, uh.
Well, okay, but obviously there are powers to be that think that we need to educate the public. You know, we can't just find people because, you know, we do find people. And if we find them, they should, well, I didn't know that was supposed to be that way. Or I didn't, you know, well, maybe we should have something on a website that says these are your responsibilities as a, you know, whatever. And come up with some kind of a.
I agree with, with those that, that find this, uh, in the wrong place. This is something the town, the town is doing that. We've got the Green Committee. We've got the, the town is doing a lot of things for, frankly, for them to put into this document a requirement that they have to do something that they might or might not do at a later date. I think, I don't think they'll do that. I don't think they should do that.
Okay.
Can, Sarah, can, do you have a comment or an observation related to this? I mean, have you seen other, other jurisdictions that would address this?
This is more kind of a point of order and in context. So we're talking about item B, which is intensely developed areas. So what the purpose of this section is for the town to evaluate the already existing development in the intensely developed area and assess how essentially stormwater runoff and the quality of that runoff can be, runoff can be reduced and quality of the runoff improved. So the education plan you're talking about is outside of this specific section. This is really just kind of focused on the IDA because it's already intensely developed. And how can that become, you know, transition to something that's having less impact on the environment? So I don't think it needs to be in there. I don't think it needs to come out except for that you are, if it's in there, then the town does have to, to take that action. And so whether you, you want to kind of force yourselves to take that action or not is the question. But it's more of a, what is runoff quality now? And how can we make runoff quality better at this later date?
Okay.
Saki doke. Good, smooth.
Okay. So that was page 10. And then we discussed the item number, the addition of item number seven. Number, page 11, no change. Page 12, no change. Page 13, under item E, has the addition of approving authority. And now that brings us to page 14. And on page 14, item number seven, we have added the town may allow. So we're going to probably have the town of Chesapeake Beach may allow N. And then the addition of within the LDA or RCA within the town of Chesapeake Beach or upon finding that off-site planting is not possible. But just, just in observing this, now we've got the town of Chesapeake Beach twice in there. So, uh, to me, I don't, I think the first reference to the town should be left. And then we could have the town of Chesapeake Beach for the second reference instead of repeating town of Chesapeake Beach, town of Chesapeake Beach.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On number nine, I think at the end of extent, there should be a period at the end of number nine, because then it starts, begins number 10.
I have a comment on number nine.
I think it's semicolon, but yes.
Is it a semicolon?
It, it's there. It's just, you can't tell because it.
Yeah, after forest.
I see, I see, I see it as a semicolon.
Commissioner Blackwelder?
Yeah, so I'm reading this. It says a permit shall be obtained from the town. So this is just a general comment throughout this, uh, document. Anything that's like, um, shall be obtained needs to be put into the active voice. Like, the applicant shall obtain so that we know who the shall applies to. So in this one, it would be the applicant shall obtain from the, this sentence is very hard to read. I think it should say the applicant shall obtain. If I read it like the sentence says, from the town.
Well, it should be now from the town of Chesapeake Beach.
The applicant shall obtain a permit from the town before forest or developed woodland is cleared. And then again, it's like kind of a, you know, like a differently worded, the clearing of forests. I, I think number nine could be worded better with the applicant shall.
Right.
And then all of that context.
Well, if it's going to, if it's going to be changed to active voice, then we have to be consistent throughout the document to have the active voice.
And that's very important when you have, when you have actions that need to be taken by a party, that has to happen throughout the entire document. It's something we should go through and, and check.
So if you look at eight, it's active voice.
Right.
Yep, so number nine should be active voice as well.
Do you want me to make the, that same change throughout the entire document?
Yeah, I think we should know who shall do what.
Right.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure I'm getting clear direction.
Yes, thank you.
And I'm sure you'll use your, leave it to Sarah's judgment about whether to have the town or the town of Chesapeake Beach?
Can I suggest that in a sentence, in one sentence, whether it's a run-on or not, that you start with, we'll start with town of Chesapeake Beach and then say town for the rest of the sentence? Is that acceptable?
That's the best way to do it.
Absolutely.
Okay. The only other change on that page is town may allow N in item number seven within the LDA or RCA within the town of Chesapeake Beach or upon finding that off-site planting is not possible. Number eight, number five in paren has been added. Now we move on to page 15.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin, is there supposed to be an S at the end of exceeds or is it exceed? Clearing a forest or developed woodlands that exceed? Or exceeds?
Which, which number are you on?
I'm sorry, the very first line on number 10. Clearing a forest or developed woodlands that exceed the maximum area.
It should be that exceeds.
I think it's exceed. Doesn't it?
I might, maybe I have a different grammatical style. It could be exceed. I felt it should be exceeds. That's, that's my.
That exceeds, yeah, because.
Grammar. But I can absolutely delete that.
I don't know, I was just.
I, I think, to my mind, it should be plural, but. Then there's the addition of the five in paren's. Number 13 has been added. No use shall be permitted in the LDA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district. Under D3, the word by, this ordinance, uh, has been added. And in A, the following shall apply. On page 16, under 4A, in red, except as may be further restricted by the underlying zoning district. That's at the top of the page. And the next paragraph, the town of Chesapeake Beach has been added. Then under 2B, Critical Area Commission, but I, I believe we'll now put the, the official name there. Number, page 17, under 6C, the word shall has been added. In D, it reads any institutional, comma, recreational, comma, and educational use permitted by right or special exception in the RC district shall be allowed in the RCA, period.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Did we vote to keep that in? I don't remember if we voted to keep this in. I, I've got a question about keeping the word institutional in there. I just worry that it says any institutional. And when you say any institutional, I know recreation or educational, but when you say any institutional, does that mean you can put any kind of structure that has, you know, an institutional feel to it on the RCA? Can you, it seems like we're opening ourselves up when we say any institutional. And I, I think we should eliminate the word institutional. Because if it's anything to do with education, we've already got that in the word education. Anything recreation, we've already got that in recreation. But do we want the word institutional to be a structure that we want to have in the RCA?
Would that be though, like a, a nature center or?
That would be educational, right?
Institutional like a government?
Yeah.
I mean, I do, or, okay, then if we do that, do we want to make it specific? Because it says any. And I just want to either be more specific or I want to take that out and make it either recreation or educational, which is I think one discussion we did have. But I don't know what the, I don't remember what the. I just worried the word, any institu, the, the two words, any institutional opens it up to all kinds of, you know, a hospital or, I mean, it could open up to a lot of clinic. It could open up to a lot of different things that it shouldn't be in the RCA.
But it does say permitted by right, so it would have to be.
Or special exception.
Well, uh, I don't know. Ms. Franklin, what are, what are your thoughts about that?
So this is referencing the zoning ordinance. What it's saying is if it's allowed in RC, then it's going to be allowed in RCA. So that, I'm trying to pull up your zoning ordinance to, you know, because I'm, I'm new, so it's not all stuck in my head.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To see what is allowed in your RC district. But it's basically saying if it's allowed in RC, we're going to allow it in RCA.
Well, the, the any references recreational, educational, you just have an issue with the. Well, the, the any references recreational, educational, you just have an issue with the institutional?
I, well, any institutional, I mean, you know.
But it's any institutional, any recreational, any.
Educational.
Educational, they're all, they're all a blanket.
Right, I understand the recreational and.
You just have an issue?
Yeah, the word institutional is what I'm, you know, any institutional is what I'm questioning. And did we approve that? I don't recall, maybe we did.
Because all this language was added. We, we approved this. This is our language.
Didn't, that was, that was, if somehow it was.
No, I, I remember us discussing this last month.
You changed the intent of that section. So you must have discussed it.
Okay.
In page 17, in number, letter I, we have the addition of the word and. Number, page 18, under II, any institutional, recreational, and educational use permitted by right or special exception in this ordinance's resource conservation paren RC and paren zoning district. So there is that same language again. In G, RCA has been added, and H has been added. No use shall be permitted in the RCA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district. Onto 19.
Um, just for a sec.
Certainly.
Back to 16, there's a footnote, footnote 10, about four lines up. I thought those were eliminated.
Oh, number nine, number eight.
Yeah.
Number seven, yeah, I thought we eliminated the citations.
Ones that are kind of in the middle, breaking up the flow of the reading?
Yeah, I, well, we've taken them out, but we've, we've, there's no need for the footnote. Page 17, the top of the page is footnote number seven. Then under six, it's footnote number eight.
Right.
And then under nine, uh, 6A, it's footnote number nine. Yeah.
There's, I didn't want to take, I didn't want to clean it up, right? Until I'd spoken with you all, but I will.
Clean it up.
Tonight, I will delete, like actually delete everything that's deleted, and change every, so that it's a clean copy for y'all to.
Thank you.
Look at.
All right.
For the first time.
I want to come in with a clean copy.
We love Chris, but he did not provide clean copies.
Now on page 19, under item number one, 200 feet has been added. Again, in number three, 200 feet has been added. And then in 3C, the language, comma, which shall be so designated and included in the list of such wetlands. And we're keeping the drafter's note, okay. Page 20, we have at the top of the page, the 200 dash foot buffer. Then under item number two, which can't be struck because we have a item number two, the language otherwise authorized by the state, and slash or. Under 4B, 200 dash foot has been added. Under six, the town may approve the placement of dredge material in the buffer, including within any portion of the critical area designated as a habitat protection area, comma, for the following, colon. A, paren, a beneficial use approved by the Maryland Board of Public Works or Department of the Environment, comma, such as the following purposes. And continuing on page 21, we have small i, backfill for shoreline stabilization measure, semicolon, small double i, use in a non-structural shoreline stabilization measure, comma, including a living shoreline, semicolon, lowercase three i, beach nourishment, semicolon, room number 14, lowercase restoration of an island, semicolon. Number five, the small v, lowercase v, the creation, comma, restoration, comma, or enhancement of a wetland, comma, or a fish, comma, wildlife, comma, or plant habitat, semicolon. Six, lowercase vi, landform measures to address coastal resiliency, semicolon, and lowercase vii, any other approved beneficial use, period. Item B, the placement in an area that was approved for the disposal of channel maintenance dredge material before June 11, comma, 1988, period. Under C, yes?
Madam Chair. Number seven.
Vii?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
I don't like that. It's just so vague. Any other approved beneficial use. And there's no. Getting a little lost here. What the subheading is, is development activities in the buffer. And so I, for me, for us to say that we'll approve any other beneficial use, I mean.
Well, it's also subjective.
Be.
Beneficial subjective. Sarah, do you, in looking at that, do you, have you seen that language in, in other official documents? Is it, do you have a comment on that?
I don't have a comment in this because it, it's related to the Maryland Board of Public Works or Department of the Environment. Like, it's, it's what's approved by them. This was placed in here by Chris. I don't know if you all discussed it, but it appears to have been pulled directly from elsewhere. But I don't know the citation specifically.
Language appeared in a different document, it was, and Chris dropped it in.
This is, right.
Okay. Well.
I know, I wish I knew what his reasoning is. Because I know he has that idea for a blue green park, and maybe that was why he put it in.
It could also be the reference from Comar, because that reference is deleted.
It might be that.
So.
Yeah, it seems very specific language.
He didn't intend to do that, so it could be that. I, I mean, as long as you wouldn't think that we would get hemmed up if somebody just said, you know, this or that is a beneficial use, and look, here it is. That's, that's my only reason for bringing it up.
Yeah, because it's, it's, it's the Maryland Board of Public Works or Department of the Environment that is approving the other beneficial use, not you all. So we can confirm that this is directly taken from Comar to replace the citation to Comar. And then if it's not, I can let you guys know. But then it becomes a question, do you want to just change that reference? Like, we are not going to let the Maryland Board of Public Works approve any other approved beneficial use in the town of, like, do you want to delete it if it's the reference in Comar? Regardless, that's kind of the question you're.
Right, so it's, yeah. Yeah, I think that's just a comfort level in, in having that very vague thing in there. How comfortable we are and how comfortable you are, Sarah, with that kind of language. I just, um, reason.
Madam Chair.
So the town, it says the town may, so we're under development activities in the buffer. And it says, the town may authorize disturbance to the buffer for the following activities, providing mitigation is performed in accordance with section D of this part. And an approved buffer management plan is submitted as required per section F for this part. So that's the overarching rule that this is falling under. So it still kind of falls under, the town can authorize the disturbance if it meets these requirements as well. So it's possible that the Maryland Board of Public Works could say, just putting this material here for a pretty hill is, I don't see that, but is, is a beneficial use. Let's say that's what they decided. It's still up to the town in your overarching thing to authorize the disturbance.
Hmm.
So it still falls back onto you to say.
And it's open in the way that we can, but not that they are definitely allowed.
Provided mitigation is performed in accordance with, so we have to go to section.
Does it leave the option with us, or does it leave like kind of the right to do it with somebody else?
I mean, it leaves the argument that if the Board of Public Works for the state of Maryland says it's another approved beneficial use, then you kind of should approve it.
Right.
Right.
Commissioner Hahn, you had a comment?
But I just, it's a different one than what she has. I just want to draw your attention to B5. We struck B5, but then there's no five after it, it goes to six.
Got it.
Yeah, she needs. Duly noted, so it should be five.
It should be five, and then if you continue on under five to next, it has little c in brackets instead of big C. And the numbering there goes little a and down, so all of those numberings need to be adjusted.
Then, there's a, several places where the numberings do need to be adjusted. And it's kind of a, while I'm not cleaning it up, the computer does not want to do it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If we're on to, going back to number, well, I guess it's number in five now, but it was number six. If we go back to Commissioner Blackwelder's point about any other approved beneficial use, I'm also wanting to strike out the restoration of an island, which is number four, which is right above that. Because I don't think there's any reason why we want to restore an island here.
Well, what about if it's eroded and they're using sledge to rebuild the island?
What island are we talking about?
On James Island, on the other side of the bay. They're taking spoilage from Baltimore and taking it down to James Island. Just finished Poplar Island, so it doesn't necessarily mean an island.
Talking about here, you're not taught, this is not referring.
I didn't write this, but I mean.
Well, I think you did. I'll think you did. It's not referring. I thought this was all referring to just right along here. This is not referring to right along here, okay. Don't we want it to just refer to the Chesapeake Beach area?
Right, so going under the reasonable assumption that this is Comar 27 dot oh one dot oh three, some of the stuff does not apply to Chesapeake Beach. So if you guys want to make a motion to remove those specific pieces, then I will do that.
You want me to make the motion? If you include mine, I will. And, and you all are in favor of striking seven?
I'm not, no. I, I, I think, well, I definitely want four. I think that's important.
Strike or to keep?
To keep.
Restoration of an island?
Yes.
You know, you think we should restore an island that we don't?
Well, I don't think it necessarily pertains to us, but this is from Comar. And I think it pertains to around us.
So what happens if, what happens if a land erosion continues? And then all of a sudden, we have an island from the erosion? If we strike this, then how do we rebuild it?
I could see, what we could do is end up making our own little islands if we don't watch out, because we've got such a shallow, shallow beach out from, you know, I could just see a whole bunch of little islands out from. I'm just concerned that restoration of an island that we don't have just seems, uh, just doesn't make any sense to me.
It seems kind of superfluous to me as well.
And even though it is a reference from Comar, it doesn't mean that we have to use everything that, you know, that we've taken out of Comar. We can certainly specify, you know, be specific to our own needs. I would just.
Well, let's make a motion.
Because you, because, okay, I would move that we, okay, well, then we should make two different motions, because it sounds we, we need, go ahead, Commissioner Blackwelder, you're first, because you started on this.
I move that we strike item number seven. Uh, um, okay, under, Sarah, I'm sorry.
5A. Now renumbered five.
Okay.
A.
No, section B, five.
No, it's, it's not B, it's A.
Five.
It's, it's 5A, Vii, is what you were recommending being, yes.
That is, yes.
Okay.
Is that enough, Sharon?
I know, I know what you're talking about when you say D.
Do we have a second for this motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So it does not pass? The next motion, vice chair?
I will move to strike 5A4, restoration of an island from draft.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, my apologies. So there are four nays, it does not pass? Before, so still, before we continue on page 21, I just want to note, I did not, I forgot to give the citation for B, the A in activities has been capitalized, so I just wanted to remark that. And in, on page 21, item number D at the bottom of the page, under buffer establishment, is the town has been added. Page 22, the addition in F, the town, lowercase i, the town has been added. On page 23, the I in the title, mitigation for impacts, has been capitalized. Item number 2G, the applicant has been added. Shall restore, the word restore has been added. And under E, buffer planting standards. Item B, critical area has been added. On page 24, under A, town has been added. Under B, the town has been added. On page 25, under part four, modified buffer area, on the map titled modified buffer area, comma, town of Chesapeake Beach, which is also underlined, which is a supplement to the town's apostrophe S, critical area map, period. Page 26, there's a section, the 290, the reference.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Is there such a map? Those the modified buffer area.
My understanding is there is a, a map.
The next page says, insert that section up here.
Yep. I guess it hasn't.
Right, so I was not trying to overly complicate things by give you exactly your zoning ord, no, not, I thought you had the map, and I apologize for that, so make sure you get, but the, I, I wasn't going to add that section of your zoning ordinance now, because you already know it and have approved it. So when I do a clean copy.
You'll include that.
I will include it.
Okay.
When I give you a clean copy, it will clean this up and then track all the changes we've made tonight, so that you guys can see that.
The, the critical area map that we were given doesn't talk about modified buffer area. Oh, and I, I looked online and I missed it, but I couldn't find where there's a map of the modified buffer area as described here.
Yeah, I have one, and I didn't realize that you guys don't have it. So I will make sure you all have it.
Provide one so we can put it in our book.
Correct.
Thank you.
Also, is there, is there a definition? Also, is there, is there a definition of what modified buffer area means?
I believe it's in your existing zoning ordinance because we're just kind of changing, we're changing the buffer exempt area to be a modified buffer area.
Yeah, in the, yeah, mod, the modified exception, I think.
Except.
For exception, something like.
A buffer exempt area.
Buffer exempt area.
So that definition, when I insert this zoning section, that change will also need to be made to the definition that's in there, to change, change what is defined.
And that's the seven pages from the current.
Correct, to 29017G1.
Talk about those pages.
Do we, do we have those pages?
29017G1?
Yeah.
Is that?
We were, I think we provided a copy of section 17 a while back. Mine's a little wrinkly.
Yes, it is.
Nobody's looked at them, I think we should look at them for.
Yeah, let's continue to go on and then we can, we can do that.
G1 is a small section. It's just a portion.
I'm sorry, I said?
G1 is just one portion, it's maybe about a page long. Because it's only G1, not all of G, unless you want it.
Oh, I see. And you saying that's a page?
Yeah.
But we, but we don't have that. And this, I mean, if you could put it up for us and we could read it, but I, I think.
It defines what the buffer exemption area is, discusses water polluting activities. Says that all uses shall be subject to provisions established in other sections of the chapter. And it has like a list of permitted uses, which includes shore erosion protection, cutting and clearing only for personal use provided buffer functions are not impaired and trees cut or replaced to prevent trees from falling and blocking streams causing damage to dwellings or other structures or resulting in accelerated erosion of the shore stream bank in conjunction with horizontal, horticultural practices used to maintain the health of individual trees, to provide access to private peers, to install or construct an approved shore erosion protection device or measure, to protect trees from extensive pest or disease infestation, and to permit the development allowed above to be constructed or installed.
So, um, so then all this other stuff is going to do what? Like the next, the next three in parentheses, whatever these are from, the box parentheses? Will that disappear from our code or will that be retained here?
Under, oh, are you talking about in the zoning?
In our zoning ordinance, because, because there's only one, one is the only paren.
It won't disappear, it won't disappear from the zoning ordinance unless it's removed from the zoning ordinance. So it's, it's a consistency.
Right, but I, I guess my question is what happens to everything after the G that you just read? Does it stay, where, does it stay here? Does it apply?
It stays in your zoning ordinance, but it also goes in the critical area ordinance.
All the rest of it is retained in this G1.
In your zoning ordinance, nothing changes in your zoning ordinance.
Okay.
It's just copying what you have from your zoning ordinance and inserting it into your critical area ordinance to say that they're consistent instead of using the development and redevelopment standards that were provided by the state.
But only that paragraph in G1 gets transferred to critical area.
We can, we could.
And the rest, the rest of section 17 goes away.
The rest of section, no.
290-17, the critical area.
I see what you're saying. That is what I was directed to do from before. I can evaluate that, but my.
I'm just, I'm, I'm not questioning, I'm just saying that's what I think is, is intended here.
Right, that's what's intended, but, and, and I was trying to defer to what decisions were being made. But if you guys want to discuss this, you know, we can do that.
Yeah, I think there's a whole lot, like, like Commissioner Brown said, this is a pretty lengthy section. We should go through it and decide what we, I mean.
What would be removed?
I don't like the idea of eliminating big swaths of code without knowing what we're getting rid of.
Okay. My feeling is that it's elsewhere, but let me, let me just make sure there's not, because I have a few notes that clarified some things.
I know, I would appreciate your evaluation of it.
Doesn't want to give it to me. So, yeah, just wants to, it does want to make sure we retain that portion.
But you're not sure, Sarah, if it continues later?
It does, well, hold on, because G1 does actually, I'm, I'm reading the, I'm reading the brackets incorrectly. G1 does carry on for all of these pages until, I apologize.
So G1 isn't a single page?
No, it's not.
Okay.
I apologize, then that explains why I didn't stick it in there, because I was like, why didn't I stick it in there if it was one page? So.
Okay.
It's, it's all of these pages and then.
Pages.
It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
We should go through it because it has some fees and lieu codified here and they're very low. And there might be some other places in this section G that maybe we should.
Okay.
So from this point on, I mean, there's been a lot of highlighted text, pages of it that have been removed. You know, along, I think page, starting with page 42, 43, 44, 45, half of 46, and then we come back with 50, 51. So substantial amount of text that's been highlighted for elimination. Do we want to, as Commissioner Blackwelder recommended, review it? And then make a determination on this next month? Or do we want to start it now?
So that's actually referring back to your variances in your zoning ordinance too. So that's why it's removed, it's just changing to go to your zoning.
Okay. So I see on, I guess it's page 50, where there's a highlighted paragraph that it says, this is already covered in the zoning ordinance. What you're saying, Sarah, is that other, what I just gave reference to is also covered in the zoning?
Everything that's deleted is covered elsewhere in the zoning ordinance and that's why.
It's been eliminated.
It's been eliminated.
Because it's a duplicate of the information, well, repetition.
Right.
Okay. All right.
That is what Chris did say, is that he wasn't going to change the modified buffer. What he provided us was going to be modified buffer area and then he wasn't going to make any changes to the buffer exempt area. So we haven't gone over with Chris, the buffer exempt area. That, that would be new with Sarah.
But that's not here, that's further down.
No, that's just what he said he was going to do because he was leaving.
Right.
My understanding was that the buffer exempt area is just being called the modified buffer area.
That's right, that's, that's, yeah, that's where he got with us. Because we didn't, we never went over any of the buffer exempt area.
Okay.
But I, I mean, there's at least the fees and lose that we need to address.
I agree regarding.
29017G and beyond, the fees and lieu are.
Well, fee and lieu and buffer mitigation is 25, but.
Well, there's, I know, but it's also like, I mean, you know, our code's been like patchwork since 75. See it right before.
Code, the code. It's number 10 in the code, G110.
Oh, I was, what are, what are we finding? I thought I was finding fees and lieu.
The fees and.
Fees and lieu is page 25?
Sorry, I thought we were in this, are we in the zoning ordinance 2020, 29017?
29017.
G, number one subsection 10, fees and lieu of planning? Or are we elsewhere? I just want to make sure I'm in the same place as everyone.
Yeah, fees and lieu code is 29, it's.
On page 62, 290-62, it says acceptable projects for use of fee and lieu monies. And then it has a big, long section about that. And then it says, number six, amount of fee. The required fee and lose should be paid at a rate of $1.25 per square foot. And I think that we talked about updating fees and lieu. But right here, the fee is codified. And typically you would reference a table that the rate can fluctuate, right?
Um, can, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Can I, can I address this issue?
Yes.
I was talking to the town administrator about this and actually a few other people about fees and lieu. It turns out that our town hasn't used fees and lieu for seven, over seven years, maybe even a decade. And I've been advised that perhaps we just eliminate fees and lieu entirely. Because apparently where we're getting all of our money is from fines, not from fees and lieu. And indeed, what fees and lieu, if you really look at fees and lieu, is an opportunity to eventually send perhaps monies out of the county, out of, even up to different parts of Maryland, the way it's been written.
To the state.
To the state, you know, to any parts of the state, actually. From what I've been determining is that fees and lieu are not the correct method to require mitigation, that we should insist on mitigation of the buffer just upfront and outright. That's what they do on the West Coast, they don't have fees and lieu on the West Coast. You modify and you mitigate right there and then. You don't, you don't just, you know, here's, here's some money and move on. And, and of course, in the codification, you also can make some adjustments if indeed there's absolutely no way to accommodate. There is a way that you can write it, and St. Michael's has done that, actually. You can write it so that you can put a little thing in there that if there has to be some amendment or modification, you can do that. But the fees and lieu program here doesn't seem to work or apply. So to use that doesn't seem to be logical and to have that in our code doesn't seem to be logical.
That's what I'm saying, we would have to eliminate it because it's in our code.
I say we have to, I would like to move that we eliminate the program entirely. And actually, we'd have to eliminate the, there's an ordinance that it was, that it was put in with, which is ordinance number O dash 0614. So I would like to move that we eliminate the fees and lieu of mitigation program.
Yeah.
Where are you at?
I'm in the code, but it's also in page, on page 25, if you want to go to page 25 on G. It's fees and lieu of buffer mitigation, it's right there, but of course they.
Didn't you put something in that referenced fees and lieu way back here?
Well, there's a whole bunch of other areas that, yes, fees and lieu is throughout the entire document. It would have to all be eliminated, but again, fines are where we need to improve on as our, we have a very poor fine, finding situation, we need to increase that. But the fees and lieu, if we haven't used it for almost a decade, it seems like a ridiculous program to have in our code. And I don't see us probably using that in the future if we haven't used it for that long.
Commissioner Hahn?
I think you have a good point. My concern is, even though we haven't used it previously, what's to say that the fines get reduced and we don't have the fines? So we need to increase the fees to keep us financially solvent? And we've struck.
Not a budget item, no, it's not a budget item. It's not a budget item. If it was a budget item, it'd be one thing, but it's not a budget item. The fines is a budget item, but the fees and lieu is not. It's just, for some reason, it was brought into this town years ago, probably Mr. Chubiac brought it in. And they did try, Ron Reel did try and use it apparently a few years ago, but they said no. But I'm concerned that it's a way for developers, mostly developers, to get out of doing their due diligence and doing their job.
Okay.
And that is why I've been told by certain people, you know, in the, in the town, that this is something we may want to just eliminate as a program.
So if we're, if we're eliminating some section way back there, we have on page 14, item seven, that we just went over, that mentions.
No, it would be that, once you eliminate the fees and lieu, you'd have to go back and just eliminate all the fees and lieu within.
Reference to it.
Reference to it, of course, throughout the entire critical area program. That'd be part of the motion.
Those motions would have to come together.
I didn't complete my motion, but yeah, that was what I was going to introduce as a motion. Well, I didn't really finish my motion, but.
Can we hear from Sarah about this topic?
So.
Is this all ad hoc, you just chime in when you have?
Well, all right. Are we, well, yeah, we seem to jump now to fees and lieu. Why don't, well, let's address fees and lieu and then we'll go back to where we were.
So with, with the fees and lieu, the only thing I would kind of recommend that you try to leave in is for your individual homeowners in the IDA, right? So sometimes an individual and the homeowner in the IDA needs to make an accommodation in their house and then they might need to remove something. And you, you want them to still be able to use their property. So I, I don't necessarily see a problem with removing them if you really, there's nowhere you want developers to mitigate. So sometimes if your town has an area that it doesn't mind being developed and has another area it wants to be preserved, then you're going to want a fee and lieu to shift your preservation. But that's not your situation, so I don't think you need to keep them. I just think keeping the individual homeowner who wants to make reasonable adjustments on their IDA. keeping the individual homeowner who wants to make reasonable adjustments on their IDA law in mind is probably something to do.
So you're saying it's legal for us to not provide a fee and lieu situation? Perfectly legal?
Well, that's a different question. I, I don't think you have to provide them, but I will double check that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Vice Chair Green Gold, do you want to make your motion, and then we'll have it seconded, and then we can finish the discussion and decide?
Yeah, I mean, okay, so my motion would be to remove the fees and lieu program, which is ordinance number O dash 06 dash 14, from the critical area, critical area program, and all references using the fee and lieu within the critical area program.
Do we have a second? Discussion? Commissioner Brown?
I'm, I'm all for eliminating things in the, in the code. But my question is, what happens to an individual? This, this is not just developers, this is homeowners and, and others that, existing properties. And when, for whatever reason, they are not able to comply, they have to take the trees down or whatever, and they aren't able to comply, they just get fined?
Can I have?
What, I mean, there, there doesn't seem to be a, offered an alternative to either get fined or not, or not at all.
According to Mrs. Wall that just gave me the answer to this, they actually do have a program where they do help provide funds for individual homeowners who need to mitigate. And they either don't have money or they can't do it. Instead of finding, they will offer that program to them, so which is, they have a special program just for that, that is not, has nothing to do with fees and lieu.
So are you proposing that program be answered?
Well, they already have that program.
But where is it at?
That, I was just told about it today. I don't even know about that program until she told me.
We should, we should have a comprehensive approach to this, not just a pick and choose, throw this out, keep.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying that there is an alternative that we are just not aware of, because we are not, we're not the code enforcers. But apparently, the code enforcers do know it.
We need to understand that alternative.
Okay, can I hold on this motion, and then maybe next month, when we come back, we can entertain this motion again, and maybe get some more information on it?
I think that's a good idea. And also, I mean, you know, obviously, you've had, you're privy to a conversation with the town administrator about a policy, and I think it's before we decide to eliminate it, we should at least see what the policy says. I mean, you know, I, and I, it's not that I'm doubting your interpretation or what you've been informed, but I think probably we should see the actual, what, what the program is before we decide to eliminate that.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Now, are we back on? Okay, so in regards to the, the section 290 dash 17G, that's a lot more comprehensive than the one page.
Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize.
We're gonna, we're gonna wait on that and then see that in its entirety before, so we can review that.
We're gonna approve all of these changes, then I'm gonna go back and stick in the big sections.
So at this point, we're gonna go, we're gonna bypass that and move on to page 29, which is part five. Other habitat protection areas. Okay, I, there's, I don't see a, a change on page 29. Then on page 30, in item number two, we have the word Maryland under standards, and item one, we've had the addition, or within 50 feet of. Page 31, under water-dependent facilities.
Hold on, Madam Chair. May I go back to the item where you said Maryland was changed?
You may.
Okay, so this section says, maps identifying these specific habitat protection areas were maintained by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Wildlife and Heritage Division. And then there's a, what's stricken out is, the most recent updated inventory was completed on. So we, we have a habitat protection area. It's the FIDS habitat that nobody will save but me. And I, this speaks exactly to that type of property. And there's a date. I, I think that we need to, I think we need to research this a little bit, too, please. Madam Chair, if we could ask.
What, what are we researching? I thought we've addressed.
So, so maps identifying these. So this could mean any maps, right? This could, this could be new maps. This could be old maps. This, I, I just, I don't know.
Are you referring to B?
I'm referring to what's struck out, and on.
B2A?
It says, the most recent updated inventory was completed on blank. Recommendations contained in, insert reference to the report, are hereby incorporated into this ordinance. And so this right here is an opportunity to identify our habitat protection areas. And I would like to do that.
Well, I, I thought we've, we've gone through the protections for the FIDS. Sarah, would you like to comment about Commissioner Blackwelder's? Talking of the maps, obviously, this is, is this referencing any map, or should we put a, a date to say what map we're specifically referring to?
I think it's trying to refer back to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources mapping, because if you have a new area, that you don't want to exclude it. But what you could be added in here is a sentence that says, these maps include the, I, I don't know what the name of your FIDS area is. I know, you know, where it is, but I don't know if, what its technical name is. But we can say, these maps include this wild, insert name of wildlife protection area in Chesapeake Beach, but may, sorry, include but are not limited to, as of this date. So that if you have another wildlife protection area in two years, or whatever it is, you don't want to exclude it. So that would be, certainly another sentence can be added to specifically reference your wildlife heritage area, but as long as it's saying, include but are not limited to.
So I would very much like to do that. So I'd like to make a motion in this section, reference our habitat protection areas. I know of are the FIDS protection area. Don't know of any others, but there might be others.
We have a second for the motion?
I second it.
All right. Discussion? Any further discussion on this? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. No opposed? Motion passes. Moving forward. 32, water-dependent facilities, and under item one, section has been added, under number two, section has been added. Number B1, the D in development has been added. Number two, area provided it is, has been added. A, the word is, has been added. If we go to page 31, there's no additions. Moving on to page 32, under C1, the word end has been added. And to ensure compliance with applicable, applicable regulations. Page 32. No additions. Page 33. One, in paren, a new or expanded commercial marina or related commercial maritime facility or activity may be permitted, may be permitted in the modified buffer area of an IDA, semicolon, two, the owner and operator of a shall demonstrate to the approving authority that the marina or facility has obtained all permits required by COMAR 26 dot 08 dot 04 dot 09. Under F1A, in paren, does not offer food, comma, fuel, comma, or other goods and services for sale in the buffer or on the community pier, period. Page 34, we have, under G, including public peers.
That last one certainly implies that there'll be no structures on the pier provided.
True. Do you see that, Vice Chair?
Yes.
Okay. On page 34, under G, including public peers, and that appears highlighted, and under G1, and peers is added. Page 35. We have the word, to the extent possible. 36 is a blank page. 37, no change.
Can I make a suggestion, Madam Chair? At this point, our numbering is different.
Okay.
So when you're saying the numbers, I don't know, Sharon, if your pages are the same as hers, but can you do like, say, say the page number, but then also like the part number?
Okay.
So that we can, we can just try to follow you?
Okay.
Because right now, I show that I'm on part seven, page 38.
Okay, okay, yeah. Sharon, I don't mean to be confusing with all of us. Just for a comment, it, I'm showing it's five after nine. I would like us to continue to go through this document. Does anybody feel any differently?
Are, are we gonna have any discussion about growth allocation or any of that?
Let's soak in more.
Well, I know, that's a section. I'm just saying, are we gonna have a discussion or are we just gonna go with the?
You want to do about that?
I mean, promise.
Well, we, if you have a, a motion or something you'd like to discuss, you can. We just have to determine, how late do we want to continue meeting? Because obviously, the other items on the agenda, the new business, where it doesn't seem like we're going to be able to address this evening.
Chair, I would like to maybe stop where we are here and finish up the meeting, if we could, because we've been here since 6 o'clock.
Okay, um, does anybody else have a, a thought on that? Okay, can, can I ask that we do, we can hold it from here, can I just ask that we, I would like to address the one item, and that's the new business about the time change? If we could talk about that and just address that? I think it's important and certainly germane to meeting next month. So I would just like to say that I'd like us to consider a time change for our meetings, to change it back to 6:00 PM. Part of that is, I think that security is an issue, and if we're going to have a presence by the Sheriff's Department, I, I think it would be beneficial for us to meet earlier. And then also, with the helping of people leaving not necessarily at 10:00. So I would like to see the time change to 6:00 PM. So it's open for discussion?
Unavailable at 6:00 PM.
Man, I'm, I can probably get here at 6:00, but I just think it's a bad precedent to set, just because I think that when you have a 6:00 meeting, you've eliminated a lot of people from the pool of applicants who might want to run for this commission or an office or whatever you're gonna have at 6:00. Because I know a lot of people couldn't attend 6:00 meetings. I mean, you know, maybe some of us could, but a lot of people commute, a lot of people have young families, and I'm just worried that 6:00, if we set a 6:00 time for the commission meetings and we have some openings, we won't be able to get any applicants, you know, unless they're, you know, retired or whatever, or they're, you know, work from home. But that's probably, you know, half of the applicants or the people that could potentially work on these commissions. So I, I'm worried about changing it. I mean, I, I think, I wouldn't mind seeing us end at 9:00. I wouldn't mind seeing us do a 7 to 9 meeting and doing that. But I'm just a little concerned about starting a meeting at 6:00 and announcing it that that's what this commission does, because it looks like we're just a bunch of fuddy-duds that, you know, not, we don't do anything else in our life, but, you know, this. So anyway, that's what I'm, I'm worried about the, I'm just worried about the presence we're setting for, you know, for that. And then just keeping that meeting going at 6:00 for here on in. But anyway, that's me, so.
Commissioner Weaver?
As a person with young children, I'll tell you, 6:00 works better versus going in a lot later. I think moms with young children, that might actually be more detrimental, have a later start, and push back into the evenings, personally.
Thank you. Commissioner Hahn?
For safety, for safety's sake, I would, I would, I would prefer the 6:00. Potentially get us out of here when it's light versus 9, 10, 11 o'clock at night.
Thank you. I'll look to the Vice Chair to say the definition of fuddy-dud, but I'm just gonna go and try to resonate that with myself.
She was talking about me.
Fuddy-duds. Oh, fuddy-duds, well.
You know, I don't, that's fine. I mean, I'm the only one here that thinks we should start later, but that's okay.
So we're gonna vote? All in favor of changing the time to 6:00 PM, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Say nay. One opposed? Motion passes. On that note, does anybody have a quick last minute thought? Commissioner Hahn?
Nope.
Commissioner Weaver? Vice Chair? Commissioner Brown?
Yes, we had one more agenda item, this rules of procedure, rules of order. I don't know if everybody's got a draft. I got a draft of it.
I think everybody, Sharon has provided everybody with a draft.
I'll provide the Chair and Secretary and our new zoning administrator with a dozen amendments that I'd like to make to that.
Wow.
Maybe we should start. Google said, fuddy-duddy is a person who is old-fashioned and fussy.
Fussy? Well.
I.
Make the fashion.
I will rescind my fuddy-dud.
Commissioner Blackwelder, do you have a minute comment?
Uh, yes, I would like to say welcome to Sarah. You're in a tornado here. You're in a tornado, here you are.
You're the fuddy dud tornado, but nonetheless.
You bear with me while I learn your specific details and that kind of thing. It will take me time to become as knowledgeable as Chris was about the specifics.
You did very well tonight. That's all I have to say for tonight.
Um, I, I second Commissioner Blackwelder. Thank you, Sarah, you did a great job. I mean, sometimes we, uh, the questions might appear left field. I, I could tell by the expression on your face, but you're being very well-prepared and, uh, your obvious expertise and knowledge is apparent. My only quick comment is that, uh, B Street is getting a Pocket Park. I think that's what it's called, a little small. Um, and so they've started work, and I've been told, um, by the forces that be, that it should be, uh, up and running within thirty days. So I, uh, I look forward to seeing that.
What are they gonna, what are they gonna put in that park?
Pockets.
That's pretty good.
No, 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 it's right on B Street. It's, um, it's a, past our, past our, my block. Then you go down before the next block, um, before Old Bayside, uh, right after Old Bayside, it's to the right. You know the house that fell on the other house?
Oh, yeah.
That, that house, that property, that lot right next to it is now the new Pocket Park.
But there's a park?
Well, after you pay the toll.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, yes. I know. Yeah, right now it looks like it just kind of like, they've put the sidewalk, but then it just seems to end. So let's hope we get some refinement and boundaries in there. But anyway, thank you all, um, good night. Oh, a motion to end?
I'll do that, Chair.
Second? All right. All in favor? Hardly, thoroughly.
Send you here?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think there's been.